In town.
Correct.
And this is, this is an attached parcel.
Correct.
Were those at one time, uh, low density residential? Those other red areas?
Uh, that I'm not sure. I haven't memorized all them out.
So, and what is-
I know there's residential on some of the lots that are designated commercial today.
We do have several other zoning conflicts in this area. You can see from the zoning map, um, the R5 that is on the east side of the Center Street is shown as low-density residential and medium-density residential. Um, and I believe that along Warren Street, yeah, Warren Street is also zoned R5 but planned for a single-family. Uh, and that may continue a little bit further to the east as well.
Amy, can you briefly describe the differences between a C1 and a CP1 district? Because around that it's mostly C1.
Yeah, the C1 and the CP1, it's basically the same zoning district. The only difference is with the CP1, it's a planned zoning district, so that means the zoning is actually contingent upon development being according to a specific plan. Excuse me. So, the, uh, with the planned zoning district, it's going to require that this development be built according to this preliminary development plan. Any significant changes would require it to go back through that public hearing process. Uh, so it's essentially getting rezoned if there's a change, significant change to the plan. Uh, now, there is the possibility of, you know, a different business moving in and keeping it, the development fairly the same, in which case you wouldn't have to go back through that. Uh, but for the actual physical development of the site to change significantly, it would require that public hearing process.
So the CP1 just provides another layer of control, not control per se, but another level of approval for the city and the policy and the-
Yeah, I think the way I would describe it is that a planned development, uh, provides protection and flexibility-
Okay.
-to both parties, both the, the city as well as the, as the landowner. From the city's perspective is that it is something that is approved and can't be modified. Now, to Amy's point, if the, if the business sells and remains, let me say, it remains a funeral home, then, then it really does, that would not come before. But if it were to sell and they wanted to, uh, add a, um, a convenience store or something to that effect on the, the rezoned CP, then it would have to come through a preliminary plan and so on.
Yeah. Uh, hypothetically, uh, this is extremely unlikely to happen, but the, if the convenience store wanted to use the existing funeral home-
Right.
-building and the parking lot, then they could do that. Um, but most likely, that type of business is going to want to build a new building.
Right.
Um, so, I mean, there are situations where you could have something like that occur and the parking lot would see more usage. Uh, but because you have it according to the specific plan, um, you have a lot more protection than you do, for example, today with it being R5 instead of RP5, there would be no public hearing or public notice of residents. Uh, if someone wanted to go and build that three-story apartment building, they could just do that today with a simple site plan approval.
And the funeral, the, the existing property is, existing commercial property is going from C1 to CP1?
That's correct.
So it would, it is-
So it's more protected as well.
Opposing the entire property and not, not just the, uh, the property where the residences exist today.
Yeah, that also would help protect the historic funeral home as well, so that it doesn't get torn down for a CVS or something of that nature.
So those two parcels of property or two lots, what is the total square footage of those?
Of the lot, all the lots together?
No, the, just the yellow ones, the ones that are-
Yellow ones.
Considered to be rezoned.
Um, I don't know if I have that in front of me, but, um-
What are the addresses?
1.34 acres total would be probably roughly half of that. Just looking at the map. Um, the addresses should be on your, your CA.
So, um-
One is, let's see, 106 and 114 South Center Street, um, would be the funeral home and the lot to the south. And then, uh, 116 West Park Street is the house to the west on Park Street.
Sorry, say those again.
Uh, it would be, uh, 114 South Center Street is the house at the corner of Park and Center. And 116 West Park Street is the one to the west.
Could you go back to the aerial shot, briefly? Thank you.
So, I guess the question that we have is, is regarding this, um, you know, council want to move forward or, uh, send it back for further discussion? And sending it back for further discussion would imply that there would, um, uh, either be some changes or, you know, there needs to be some specific direction, uh, to what we would like the commission to look at, um, or reject, uh, the application. Uh, rejection of the application, I believe, would require a supermajority. Is that-
That's correct.
That is correct.
Well, I move we pass ordinance 2395 approving the rezoning request Z-12-02, subject to the stipulations A through D.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion dies, uh, for lack of a second. Uh, any other council member have a, uh, motion on how to proceed?
I'd like to, I, I'm not exactly sure how to turn it, but move it back for further consideration. I would like to see some of the landscaping concerns that we've addressed tonight be brought before the commission and see if we could have that revised for final approval.
So you're asking that we remand it then?
Yes.
You know, I, here's the thing.
Okay.
You know, uh, and I can appreciate what you, what you would like to see. Uh, and it appears that, that we're very close to being, meeting the design standard as it, uh, comes to landscaping. And Amy said that the, uh, uh, what we're, what they are out, uh, tuned with is very minor. Uh, I, I think that this is, I think this is us sending it back to the planning commission because we've got a personal preference ourselves. Uh, my thing is, is if it's meeting the design standard or close enough that planning commission sent it to us with a six-one vote, and the, the person that was voting no was actually voting no because he didn't want to see it rezoned, not because of anything that had to do with the development plan. Now, I don't know if you've been to any planning commission meetings, uh, if any of you have been to any planning commission meetings or have watched them on YouTube, but, uh, I've been to meetings and I've watched them on YouTube. Uh, they work a plan over pretty darn well. They ask lots of questions and, hey, sometimes they have their own personal preference questions that they ask for in addition. Uh, but, you know, at the end of the day, I think that what we've got a rule on is whether or not it meets the design standard. And if it, if it does, or if the planning commission thought that it met it closely enough that, uh, that they sent it to us on a six-one vote, and, and really, they, go watch that last planning commission meeting. They, they talked about this particular issue for 90 minutes probably before approving it six-one, and they are pickier than we are.
Yeah.
So, I, I, you know, I, I don't like the idea of sending it back. Uh, and, and I certainly don't like sending it back on the, uh, uh, because, uh, something, because we would like to see something aesthetically that, that has already been addressed at the planning commission level. But that's just me.
Just to expand on that just a little bit. Um, the planning commission will discuss the landscaping and the architecture in a lot more detail at the final development plan. Uh, they generally just sort of gloss over it at the, the preliminary plan level. Uh, so they did discuss it, which means that they will certainly have a more detailed discussion, uh, when the final development plan goes through.
And they will have a much more detailed discussion, I guarantee.
So, Amy, I, I calculated the, uh, found the, uh, square footage and it's basically half an acre for those two lots. Based on 23,000, uh, almost 24,000 square feet of land space, how many apartments would go on there?
I don't know that that's a relevant question because we're talking-
I'm not sure that, that she can answer that question.
Is there not a density per, per square foot?
I am not a land planner or architect. I really would have to do some research and get back to you.
But, but I mean, you certainly know the density per acre-
Can we say forty?
Fifteen units per acre is, uh, fifteen units-
We could say two hundred in that case.
Is what is considered high-density residential per the community development plan, uh, which is supposed to be what the R5 district, uh, would fall in, that high-density category.
Is there a minimum square footage that which, I mean, is it, does it, is it-
I don't believe so. Um, off the top of my head.
This could support seven apartments. That's kind of what I'm hearing.
Um, at a minimum, it would be recommended for seven-plus apartments.
And that includes parking? I'm assuming that those calculations are patient?
Uh, no, that's the density that you were talking about, using that high-density category from the community development plan, which again shows this is a single-family. But if it showed it as high-density, which is what it normally shows R5 properties as, then it would be recommending 15 units or more per acre. So it would be recommending a minimum of seven units per acre. I'm trying to fit that on with the parking. I don't know if that's feasible in this case or not. I, I just don't know. But-
I mean, really, you're looking at two duplexes or a quadplex, would you say?
I'm not going to speculate.
I don't know that we're not, the landowner's not asking for that at this point.
One of the arguments is that, from the planning commission, is that we would rather have it be a parking lot instead of apartments. And I'm just trying to get to how likely is it to become an apartment when there's only enough space for basically two duplexes? I mean, it's a residential lot. And even if it's a lot together-
If you had three or four-story building, I mean, you could easily fit that number of units on there, I would think. But I don't know because, again, I'm not a, a land planner, so I'm not going to speculate, uh, what the design would entail. I mean, there's so many different designs you could do there. It could be any number of different options.
Right. And, and the landowners, the individual requesting the rezone, our action is to either deny with a supermajority or send it back or approve. That's all we're doing. We're not going to say, uh, you know, if you want it to stay R5, then the motion should come back to deny, to reject.
And I don't think anybody's speculating that this is going to be a four-story apartment building if this gets denied.
No.
The reason that this is being brought up is because with these homes sitting vacant, um, if, we'll have to look at the length of time they've been vacant. But if the non-conforming use is no longer there, uh, the legal non-conforming use, then that's pretty much the only thing these properties could be used for. So if they were of no use to the applicant because she couldn't, her parking lot there, she might sell them to someone who wanted to put apartments there. So, I mean, it, there's just too many unknowns to try to guess what might happen in the future. Uh, but part of our job is to look at the different possibilities of what's allowed and what would be allowed.
Right. And that's, that's why I'm, that's, that's a possibility.
Correct.
Okay. So, so give me the options again, if you will.
You can accept, uh, you can reject with a supermajority, or you can send it back to the planning commission with specific instruction on what you would like to see, uh, come back regarding the application. Um, my assumption is that that would have to be something, uh, upon which the planning commission has authority to act. I, you know, I don't, uh, I mean, we can't turn it back and ask them to do something that they're not permitted.
Right.
If you send it back, it needs to be, you need to give some guidance as to why you sent it back.
Why you sent it back. So those are the three options.
And with that being said, all, the only thing I'm hearing that this council is considering to remand it would be landscaping. Is that correct, Amy?
And, and elevation, Park Street elevation of the garage.
And if we consider that, I think that's really first thing. Um, the elevation absolutely is, is a concern and one that is probably something, and you have a very good point, is it's really something they can have recommendations on, but they don't have really ground to stand on to demand anything because it's met the minimum requirements. The landscaping is a bit different, but I'm-
In a planned, in a planned district, you can't. I mean, you can't, in other words, am I correct on that, Amy? I mean, in a planned district, you can say, um, we will, we want to see, you know, this type of elevation or that type of elevation. We want to see this material, that material. We want to see this type of landscaping. Those are things that can occur in a planned district because it is planned.
The way I understand it, it's because it's an accessory building. Why we didn't hear that-
Because it's an accessory building, it's not subject to our current design standards. But we, but the planning commission can say, yes, we want this or, or we want that in order for it to approve.
The planning commission's role is in approving development plans is to make sure that they are fitting in with the surrounding area. And so they do look at things like that. Um, and they even have the right to look at that, even if it's not something that's specifically required by the code. They can say, well, because of the situation that this is in, we think that this needs to have, you know-
Different.
This different feature or design. Um, they, they can do that. That is within their scope. Um, we generally evaluate things based on the code requirements, even when it's a planned district and it's not necessarily, um, as set as a requirement. Uh, for example, on the landscaping, still compare it to the landscaping requirements that it would have if it was not a planned district, although they can deviate from that since it is a planned district. So it all goes into that sort of negotiation. Uh, the planning commission vetted this out thoroughly and six-to-one, uh, of a recommended approval. Um, the final development plan will go back before them to try to work out some of these more deep, finer details like the landscaping and the elevations.
I'd like to ask one last question, and this is actually Shirley directed towards you. Considering through both this meeting and the planning commission meetings, um, as it goes to final design, uh, is there the opportunity to, to look at some of those designs a bit more and maybe get to address some of those concerns?
Yes, the architect already worked on the end of the garage and made larger windows. And, uh, also the, um, yeah, I didn't want an entrance on that end. Uh, but it fits in with the siding, exactly the same siding as every home across from us. Uh, the color is going to be very nice to work in. Uh, if you look at the house to the west of us, um, and I think you should make a trip over there to look at it. Um, I'm going to be heading to us next to another vacant house. There are five vacant homes on that lot, on that lot. Um, I think my concern is that your planning commission asked that we look into more, um, landscaping and also to make it look more homely, will you vote? We are limited because the trees are huge that we're leaving on the outside. You can't plant noodle trees under old giant trees. They aren't going to grow. So I told Amy we would look at some bushes, flower beds, grass. But I have to say, if you look at the bank, parking lot that you all approved several years ago, there is no landscaping whatsoever. So I feel like we've been over backwards leaving as many trees as possible to make it work. Uh, my other concern, and I don't know how much some of the new members are aware, we are on a timeframe, and I started this in February. KDOT will be tearing up our north entrance in the spring. My hope was to get this through both committee meetings and council because the mover needs 90 days to move the homes. If you send me back and I start over, I'm not going to have that project done before you tear me up and don't have any parking at all. So I'm concerned.
Well, the, well, the project that is, as proposed here, will that accommodate, I know, all the, the challenges that you're going to face with the highway construction plan? Will that accommodate, I know the entry, the garage access and everything else, everything will be eliminated from that?
They're going to work with us. Um, it may never work as well as it did before because we're losing a north entrance and we're now going to have a west entrance. We don't know, but we're losing parking because of that. So with this project that we've got now, if we can get that started and then by fall, um, that was my hope before we get torn up and, and lose what we have, which will not let our business operate very well.
So Shirley, you are, you are losing the northwest-
Exit entrance behind the-
Yes, one of them.
Yeah, that single one there.
And we asked for parking several years ago when you paved Park Street. I came and requested to the council, or we never got the council. We came through planning. And they wouldn't allow us to match Park Street where you have angled parking. Uh, that never happened. So we tried many, you know, different ways to get some extra parking over there. We were told that there was going to be plenty of parking, park on both sides on Park Street, and that's what they've done. But this would accommodate your four lanes, that your traffic's got to walk across, your pedestrians have to walk across for safety and for getting some of the cars off of Park Street. So those are my main concerns. Now, it goes back, we were going to address both the two things that you have concerns with. And that shouldn't be an issue.
Have you considered scaling back the development to just the corner lot?
No, it won't work.
Why, why not?
I can't.
Could you come to the mic?
Oh.
If you could, please. We're going to have lots of questions.
For one thing, we were asked to buffer the residential the best we could. So that's why a garage is going there. We're going to tear down two garages that are there. So we thought that meant what we were requested to do.
Means it's a six-foot fence, correct?
And met it well. And there's a six-foot fence between this vacant house-
Right.
-and our new garage. So I won't have to look at the vacant house, which is not very sight, it's very unsightly. But anyway, uh, we tried to even buy that property and we did not. So we've even looked into that. I didn't want to go further west. This meets our needs. And, um, we designed it to meet our needs and we thought we had accomplished with the planning commission's recommendations, which are the same things you're questioning. We'll go back and work with them on a final development plan, and I hope that everybody would be very pleased with that. So, can I answer any other questions?
So, in answer to my question, you can't, one lot would be, not be enough?
No, would not, because then I wouldn't have my garage whatsoever. Um, and I don't think the neighbors, this certainly gives them a buffer that we thought was, uh, a very expensive garage. Um, it's not cheap to build a garage. Um, and it's supposed to look nice, and we will make it look nice.
Garage actually removes vehicles that are parked outside currently.
Right.
Yeah.
And I know someone had a concern about garage doors. You have three garage doors right now. As you drive down Center, when you look at our property, you will still have three garage doors. They'll just be in a new building. So that will address that issue also. And the alley will stay open to the public, to the west or to the homes. There's only about five homes that use that alley, and we don't want to encumber them. We will fix, um, that is paved on our property and, um, so it'll still function as an alley. And there's three entrances from that alley into that parking lot, which makes it very good flow. So we've really, really worked since February. It's been a great deal of money getting engineers and architects on board. So if we could proceed, we would really appreciate that for a deadline to make it work with KDOT and the other interruptions that are going to take place at our business. So, thank you. And that whole plot, those three lots, were all on, uh, the Gardner City Enhancement Development Plan because they thought it should be commercial. It was on that for 10 or 15 years, and I never used that plan to develop, wished I had now, but I didn't. Didn't have the foresight of what KDOT was going to do to us. Um, and so with this and what KDOT's going to do, that should make us very operational and make it a lot safer, not only for Park Street, but for all the people that need to come to a funeral. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
So that being said, how would council like to proceed?
Thanks, but, uh, understanding their, their openness to further develop some of those landscaping concerns that have been addressed, I move to pass ordinance number 2395 approving rezoning request Z-1202, subject to the three described stipulations.
Which are?
A, the development shall be in accordance with Exhibit A Development Plan, Exhibit B Landscape Plan, and Exhibit C Elevations, which are filed in the office of the Planning Commission Secretary at City Hall and which are incorporated by reference as is set out in full pair-in. In addition, the development shall comply with all regulations and standards of the City of Gardner unless specifically exempted.
That's-
Next, I stated four, or three, and there's actually four listed down here, the following stipulations.
So stipu, essentially the stipulations as submitted by the planning commission. Okay, is there a second?
Second?
Motion Freeman, second Gregorsik, that we pass ordinance 2395. Freeman?
Yes.
Gregorsik?
Yes, sir.
Morrow?
Yes.
Bodavich?
No.
2395 passes. Thank you all very much. New business item number two, considering our rezoning request from Arvin's tow service located at 29960 West 191st Street. Uh, this is rezoning request Z-12-03. Uh, this will also be an ordinance. That ordinance would be 2396, and the same three potential actions would also be available on this item. Amy?
There you go.
Okay, so this property is outlined in yellow on your screen. I look at on 191st Street, existing zoning C2, uh, general business district. Uh, the proposed zoning would take that to, oops, I'm sorry, I didn't change the heading at the top, as C3 commercial district. Uh, the development plan map shows the property, um, as for commercial uses, uh, which would be consistent with both C2 and C3 zoning districts. The 2010 aerial view of the site shows, uh, the existing house and outbuilding on the property. Uh, the reason for the rezoning request is that the property owner wishes to have a motor vehicle tow lot in that location, uh, which is not allowed, uh, in any case in a C2 district. It is allowed with a conditional use permit, uh, approval in a C3 district. Uh, so the C3 zoning is requested so that the applicant can have the conditional use permit considered. Uh, that application has also been submitted and, um, scheduled for next week's meeting pending approval of the rezoning. If the rezoning, uh, is denied tonight, uh, the conditional use permit would either be withdrawn or denied, um, or it could be continued if this was remanded to the planning commission. Uh, the property is 3.89 acres. Uh, there were no members of the public who made comments during the public hearing. Uh, commissioners briefly discussed the history and the future of the roads and land uses in the area, and then voted for, uh, to recommend approval at 60 with Burnett abstaining.
Why did Burnett abstain?
Um, I believe he is related to someone who works for the company and felt it would be better to abstain.
Questions?
So what did you say the current use would allow?
Uh, the-
Or the current zoning, rather?
The current, I mean, there's a long list of uses, uh, that would be allowed in the C2 district. It's our, uh, general business district, um, which we have along much of Main Street to the east of downtown. Uh, there's also quite a bit of it, um, near the interstate, um, vision C3 there as well. But, um, that's your basic retail business district.
Let me see the aerial view again.
So a tow lot involves storage of what types of vehicles? Anything?
Um, by definition, it's just storage of vehicles. So it's not specific type of vehicle that-
Tractor trailers?
It falls in that definition.
Passenger cars, those kinds of things?
Um, hypothetically, I'm not sure specifically. Um, I, clearly it wouldn't be, um, available for a cargo container facility because that would be a completely different use.
So no, no intermodal containers?
Correct.
Honey, and a CUP, even though it is a C3, they'd still need a conditional use permit in that.
That's correct, and that's another- That's correct, and that's another public hearing, and that would also come before you as well.
Would council like to proceed with ordinance 2396?
Move we pass ordinance 2396, approving Z-12-03 Marvin's tow service to rezone approximately 3.89 acres to C3 with no stipulation.
Second. Motion Morrow, second Freeman, that we pass 2396. Morrow?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Bodavich?
Yes.
Gregorsik?
Yes.
2396 passes. New business item number four. Excuse me, new business item number three, consider authorizing the interim city administrator executed contract for janitorial services with Rightway Janitorial Incorporated.
The city has an existing contract with Rightway Janitorial Services to provide janitorial services for all the city's buildings. That contract comes up, ends at June 30th. So in May, the city via invitation to bid, opened invitations to bid. And on your sheet, you'll see the list of the six respondents that came in. It's important to notice the top three were very close, just a range of $43 per month on those. The city staff is recommending that we select Rightway Janitorial to continue providing the same services. You see, it's not the cheapest, it is the third from the lowest, so it's $43 additional dollars per month. The main reason is we've had them for quite some time, been very happy with their work. And they've been very responsive, they're located closer than some of the others. Anytime we've had issues and needed quick response time, we've gotten it. So that is our recommendation to award the contract to Rightway Janitorial. Any questions?
What came out of the contract that allowed them to lower their costs by $700 a month? Or what came out of the bid? Or the, I guess the.
Can be an RNT, wouldn't it?
Invitation to bid.
Invitation to bid.
Was there a change in the services, scope of work?
The only thing that really changed in the scope was previously we, the materials were not included. So materials were included in this, in the bid price they provided this time.
What did that equal to, since the city was buying the chemicals basically to clean the building? Was that kind of a net-net neutral?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit of a disadvantage here.
No problem.
Filling in for Dave. I can get that if you're sure, I don't.
No, it's negligible, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So did you get separate costs for the additional services then? The window washing, carpet cleaning?
Those are not part of the base bid. But we do have, we do have prices for those, yes.
And so where did they fall on those services?
It varies.
Well, I mean, on each of them, where did they place?
Well, we had several different ones, so. I mean, that's information I can get you, but like I said, each additional service varies, so.
This contract forces the city to zonings for the core janitorial services. While they provided prices, we're not locked into using them for those services if we wanted to put any individual piece, whether it be window washing or carpet cleaning, outbid?
I don't believe so. Like I said, we've used them in the past because they've been very responsive and they're able to do it at a reasonable price.
So then those numbers are, excuse me, those numbers are actually à la carte numbers, then? If they do that, then that's the cost for carpet cleaning, as an example, or hard surface cleaning, or window cleaning? That's correct.
It's, yeah, it's separate from the base bid.
Yes, so did everybody provide those?
Yes.
Those costs? Just as a matter of fact, they didn't ask, you didn't ask for them, but they just?
It's standard practice.
And we have those listed, and they provided a price for those. But they're not included in the base bid.
Under the previous two-year contract, did we have any service-related issues with this particular contractor? None?
Nothing significant, no.
So someone we've been happy working with, we're going to get it for less for the next 18 months for the same services?
Yes.
But we're paying more than the lowest bidder?
By less than 1% without a change of service. I mean, while it is more, it's under 1% of the low bid. And they run the business, in my opinion, they've created a long-standing relationship with no service-related issues.
I don't know if you're aware or not, this cleaning service occurs when there's no city employees on site. So, you know, as part of the relationship is, over time, we've had the service and without issues with.
And they're a local company.
Property, and so when they're a local firm. So, I mean, that is a consideration.
There was a factor too, just the fact that if we bring in somebody new, there will be additional staff time in getting them up to speed, so there will probably be hidden costs.
Yeah, transition costs are endless.
43 per month.
Mike, what about the incumbent? Do they provide any sort of lead accreditation points to any lead programs that we have at the city level? Or does the city level, does the city, okay. Got it.
It seems like last time this bid came up, though, we changed the scope of work after this company bid. I mean, there seems to be a history of favoring one company. If you look back on the, I can probably find it real fast, but look back at the council action forum before.
We don't have that in front of us, so how would that be?
Oh, I'm telling you, that's what happened.
That's not good enough.
So you, I guess you could.
Does anybody just yet?
I mean, if this is something that you wanted to bring up, you probably should have brought in, that's for everybody.
Right. All bidders had the same scope.
Correct, it was a bid, everybody had the same opportunity. This company made their pitch, and we think they're the right choice.
And because they're the incumbent, they know the efficiency.
Absolutely.
I mean, let's face it, that's simple business, so.
Absolutely.
They know the efficiencies, they understand the frequencies, they understand us as a customer, so they they have a little better wiggle room, if you will. So I don't see anything wrong with, to Heath's point, 1% more. If we're happy, that's a nominal cost to staying happy.
Question move that we authorize the interim city administrator to execute a contract for janitorial services with Rightway Janitorial, Inc. for a term of 19 months, beginning July 1st, 2012, and ending December 31st, 2013, with the option to renew for one additional year.
Second. Motion Freeman, second Gregorsik, that we authorize the interim city administrator to execute a contract for janitorial services with Rightway Janitorial, Incorporated. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thanks, Tim. New business item number four, withdrawal of conditional use permit, CUP 12-01, Russell Oil and Gas Lease. There's really no action needed on this, is that right?
That's correct. We just wanted to have this on your agenda because it was continued specifically to this meeting, but the application has been withdrawn, so there is no action necessary.
New business item number five, consider authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Charlie Brunker Excavating, Incorporated for the Mulberry Street Rehabilitation Project.
Yeah, earlier this year, city staff identified Mulberry Street, between Washington and Shawnee, is falling into disrepair. It is significant enough, we felt we needed to address it. So staff prepared plans internally and put the project out to bid. And you have in front of you the list of bidders that responded to that bid. Charlie Brunker was the low bid, at a little over $65,000. And staff is recommending that they be awarded the contract.
Have we ever worked with this particular company before?
Yeah, we've worked with them several times.
Okay. I did have one question with the guardrail project that would be put off to 2013. I just wondered if that particular guard, if there'd been any incidents as of late that a guardrail might have either prevented or created a little bit of a safety zone that might have not resulted in any sort of, the extent of injuries or the damage?
There haven't been any accidents there in recent times. And it definitely is below standard, needs to be replaced. And that project is proceeding, its design was just completed on it, but this project basically bumped it back for construction.
And we should be able to fund that with the 2013 budget?
That's the point.
Would council like to proceed?
Move we authorize the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Charlie Brunker Excavating for the Mulberry Street Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $65,169.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion Morrow, second Freeman, that we authorize the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Charlie Brunker Excavating for Mulberry Street Rehabilitation. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business item number six, consider authorizing the mayor to execute a contract extension with Michael B. Press for consulting services as interim city administrator from June 30th to July 31st. As you're all aware, Cheryl Harrison Lee is anticipated to start work middle of next month as our permanent city administrator. This extension would allow coverage for the period of time from end of the month to her start date, and also provide a couple weeks of coverage to allow Cheryl to glean any information from Mike as necessary, so that we would have a smooth transition. So it's my recommendation that we do extend for another month. Discussion?
I've got a question for Mr. Press. Is another month adequate based on tribal knowledge and transition? I recognize that she, you know, is a great candidate, and obviously was awarded for that reason, but nonetheless, based on our needs, is that enough time?
I think so. I think that we've already had some communication about what's going on in the city and things that she needs to be looking at. I think a two-week period of time is adequate for an appropriate download. And then I will be available after that at no cost to the city, certainly, to answer any questions that she might have, or to help out wherever it might be needed.
Good, thank you.
How would council like to proceed?
Move we authorize the mayor to execute a contract extension with Michael B. Press for consulting services as interim city administrator from June 30th, 2012 to July 31st, 2012.
Second.
Motion Morrow, second Freeman, that the mayor execute a contract extension with Michael B. Press for consulting services as interim city administrator from June 30th through July 31st. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Council updates regarding staff and organization.
Mayor and council, you have before you a memo that describes a plan that I think is appropriate for the city at this time. As you know, we've had a recent increase in activity in both planning and codes areas. Been going on for a while now, and the workload is getting pretty unwieldy. With the economy turning around, and we're seeing increase in permit requests and things of that nature, and certainly with the other development opportunities that are coming this way, I believe it's important and appropriate that we have someone in the community development department as either a director, or the title really isn't important at this time, but someone to be in charge of planning and codes and development. That, I think, is something that will help structure with that department, allow more work to be accomplished. And there are some other components in there, which include some staffing, most of which would probably be considered seasonal staffing for warm weather months, where we have an increase in building activity and property code violations that need to be checked out. We have two people right now to do that, and that's just not enough. We have any increase more in building activity, and certainly we've had lots of weed and other property code violations that come to us via complaint. We do not initiate those, they come to us by complaint. We need some additional staff. I think the ability to hire part-time, seasonal, no benefits salary only is an inexpensive and effective way to cover some of that. This does call for the elimination of the assistant city administrator position as a standalone position. In doing that evaluation, we've looked at all the duties, and Melissa helped us before she left with a fairly exhaustive list of everything she has done and she did do. Obviously, a lot of her time was spent community development. With community development director, that part will be taken care of. A goodly portion of her work was spent with public information efforts, newsletters, other kinds of things that we have already reassigned to existing staff, both the city clerk and the administrative assistant, and they're managing those very nicely. I believe that we need someone designated as a backup to the city administrator during her absence, whether that be for sick, vacation, or any other reason. And I believe that the finance director is uniquely situated to handle those additional duties. We would look at what those duties do to her position and regrade the position, and probably have a salary increase that would go along with that. But I think for the salary equivalent, benefit equivalent of the assistant city administrator position, we can do both. We can hire the community development director, we can create a new position of finance director slash assistant city administrator, and have still some room left, potentially for some additional staffing requirements that I think are fairly urgent now, and will be even more urgent as time goes forward. So that's the essence of this proposal. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Like our first guidance does, is it the individual in place that makes it the ability to merge some of the duties of the finance director and assistant city administrator? And if there were a change there, would we have to reanalyze that position?
Well.
Or do those duties usually align themselves?
I would tell you that there's usually, in cities of this size and a little bit smaller, there's usually two approaches to the assistant. That when it's not a standalone, it's usually not a standalone position. It usually either goes to finance or public works, because those are areas of high activity and the consumption of lots of city resources. For me to say that the incumbent didn't help make this decision a little bit easier would be not accurate. Obviously, she's very knowledgeable. Any finance director who does the budget knows what's going on in the city. Has a great handle on the finance, which essentially drives government, as we talked about before, the budget being your blueprint plan for your work effort for that given year. So her innate knowledge of what goes on in this organization, knowing what public works wants in their budget, knowing what they do in general, not specific. She probably couldn't build a road, but she understands what it costs to build a road and what the staff is requesting in those regards when that would come up. But any good finance director. But, any good finance director is probably the first place you would look if you needed to assign assistant city administrator duties. In a fallback situation, and again, in, in my career, we've had everybody in administration that was away, and, and the acting duties usually went to someone in finance or budget. So, it's fairly typical, because of their knowledge of, of the budget and the finances and the debt, of what's going on in the city, that they're uniquely situated to be of great assistance to the city administrator while they're here, and certainly act in their capacity while they're not. So, I don't know if I answered your question in a roundabout way, the answer is yes, it has something to do with that, but yes, we would look there first, probably, if it was a different incumbent as well.
But we have a reasonable expectation to find someone that could build the role or-
Certainly, any finance director who's expected to be able to do the budget would certainly be someone who would be a great sounding board to the city administrator, and one of their closest confidants in, in dealing with the city's business, yes.
Other than, other than, from a structured perspective, other than the city administrator, the finance director is truly the only other executive-level position that has that horizontal objectivity across the organization, whereas all the other directors do have a, I mean, they all work well and understand, but, you know, they are more significantly focused on their particular areas.
With all that said, obviously, you wouldn't recommend it unless she had the bandwidth to handle it?
That's pretty much the case, yes, sir. Even if it costs a few extra dollars a month.
Let's not hear her there. But speaking of money, I also heard that you said with that bucket of money that we've got available with the recent departures, we're actually going to be positive, even with the additions-
Well-
Spent out those six items?
I, I would say not, not necessarily on all of those items.
Okay.
What I can say with, with some surety is that with the dollars allocated to the assistant position for both salary and benefits, we can hire a community development director or similarly titled position, plus provide the appropriate compensation for this positional change within that amount. Now, additional staffing and part-time staffing and something, some of that might still be available to fit in there, but I, I just can't tell you at this point, because we have not graded the position yet, have not hired a community development person.
So we still have that wiggle room?
We have, we have that flexibility.
But we could begin setting things in motion-
That, that's, that-
With a-
That, that would be really my hope, was that before Cheryl got here, we could start a recruitment process, if you all support this idea, we could move forward, and then when she got here, she wouldn't have to start from that point, she could have the applications in front of her, and then start whittling down the applications at that point. We'd just be that much further ahead.
That's great support.
And as far as making the transition, transition for the finance director to pick up additional duties, and that's, you're anticipating a change in the salary structure, I mean, the, the salary guide?
The salary ordinance would, yes, that would have to be changed as, as a result of this.
And that could be taken care of?
At a future date, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, reasonably soon.
Certainly.
Sir, is this a, why is this a council update and not a new business item? What are you, are you asking for a vote, or what are you asking for?
I'm throwing this before you at this point, because it's the first time you've seen it.
That's right. Why, why are we seeing it now as opposed to-
Because this is when I gave it to you.
Discussion item. You put it on the council update, but you didn't think that it was necessary to have this before the meeting?
I gave it to you when I gave it to you, sir.
I, I realize that, but it's an important enough document and-
I didn't ask for a vote tonight, it's before you for consideration right now.
Are there objections to it?
I'd just like to have the information when he has the information, or when anyone has the information, for that matter.
We got it all at the same time, so it's equal.
And not spring, spring it on us, you know, as a oral presentation, when really it's, it's a request to add a, a position.
It's a, it's a information board to-
We're not adding any FTEs, it's a net zero, there is no additional FTE from this particular part of the proposal. So it's an internal shift, it's not a request for a new position. In fact, you had this position before, there is a position description still on the books for community development director. You defunded that position, as I understand, in years past.
Well, I mean, if you're looking for consensus, I'm, I'm comfortable with this plan.
The things that need to be done officially by vote, the salary ordinance and the change and all that will be brought before you if, if there's consensus to proceed forward.
Yeah, I appreciate just the open dialogue, despite when I got the document, because we all got it at equal times, so we've got the time to chew on it and understand it, and ask more questions if necessary-
Sure.
-of your own volition, but we're not voting on anything here.
Great.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Our next item is budget discussion. Tonight, we're looking at general fund overview, revenue and expenditures, and then departments within the general fund would be administration, finance, community development, and then-
Do, do we need to adjourn first and then go-
On the agenda, we have adjourned after, would you rather adjourn first and then move-
Derry was going to change that, actually, she was going to ask you to adjourn the meeting because the next is actually a work session, and I actually need like two minutes.
Okay. We should adjourn prior to. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Motion Morrow, second Freeman, that we adjourn our regular business meeting, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, two minutes, uh, two minutes to, for Morrow to get ready and, and need a quick break?
Well, yeah, I wouldn't mind a little.
Getting ready? We adjourn till nine o'clock if I'm a bit early? Yeah, well, yeah, we're adjourned, so we'll still, we'll begin-
We're back to the other night. It's no new information, I just want to make sure that it's a tie. It's solid, you know? But since you and I had a discussion, I didn't want you to get caught off guard.
Yeah.
But again, it doesn't change the, I can't, the conversation, the way it's coming.
In fact, I'll go get my- At the heat of the city, if you will. Heat of the city hall.
At least for a while, that's good stuff. My janitorial contract. I don't know. I think he usually does. Oh, Dave does, okay. Okay. Well, enjoy your evening.
I mean, it's been a thirty-nine year transition. Because that, that cost is unrealized by many people here.